November 12th, 2024. My name is Marty Aitkenz. I'm the chairman, the vice chairman, Mr. Ray Dell. Boardman is Mr. Chin, Mr. Frank, Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Barry here, our clerk, Mrs. Griffin, and the director, Mr. Conlon's behind me. You got a cell phone or pager? Could you put it on vibrate? Trying to interrupt the meeting.
I think we can leave the pager off.
Leave the pages off.
I don't know if anybody has one, so I don't know if they need.
They have them. They said for 40 years.
When was the last time we saw them?
Couple of weeks ago. A kid, he says, what the hell is this? It's a pager.
Was it that?
No. He's looking at my cell phones. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up? I want you to take an oath. May you tell the truth. Mr. Chin? If you're not going to take an oath, you're not going to testify. So no one's going to take an oath, no one's going to testify.
If you're going to speak tonight, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matters now in hearing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right now, Mr. Timmons, you like the dress? You hear correct? He's out there. All right.
Taking a call.
I guess.
Somebody grab him.
I get my man. We're just waiting. Mr. Timmons has something to tell the board tonight. I don't know, make your law. Yeah, go get him. Just tell him it's mine. Twenty minutes. Thank you very much.
Well done.
You have the floor. No, that's fine. I know you're a busy guy.
I'm here on another open meeting law complaint. It's quite similar to one we dealt with back in the spring. I'll just turn her on. I got it.
It's taped.
Taped. Just leave it alone. It's very similar to the one we dealt with in the spring, but the circumstances are a little different. The October 8th meeting, everything seemed to go fine. The complaint is about the minutes, and I noted when I came in that each of you were present at that meeting, so that's a good thing. The complaint about the minutes, there are two. One of them is that there's an item in the minutes that says that a neighbor spoke about the matter, but it doesn't specify what the neighbor said, meaning a summary of issues. Now, the person who complained indicated that it was parking and density. So my suggestion, do you folks have, you have the complaint in front of you? So I'm in the fourth full paragraph. My suggestion on that one is that perhaps we do amended minutes and we just add the term in paragraph 12, that the gentleman spoke in concern of this project raising parking and density issues. So you'd have amended minutes that address the concern here.
All right. So when we, she has the minutes, they're amended, we'll do it next meeting?
I beg your pardon?
We do that next meeting when we get the new agenda minutes?
No, we can, I was going to talk it through now.
Okay.
And then, and then if you designate me to respond.
Yep.
Then, yeah, we'll prepare amended minutes and I'll do the response.
There you go.
And then the next, I mean, this is not crisis level stuff, portuously.
No, I know.
As you can see by the first solution. The second question talks about something involving Mr. O'Brien, which stunned me, given the clean living history I'm aware of. But there's some talk about you clarifying the existence of a prior ZBA case for this Newcombe Road, and do you recall doing that at the last meeting?
I raised the issue because we had.
Yeah, ask you to speak.
We had, at a previous meeting a couple of years ago, we had approved a building on that site, and I recalled it, but I didn't know the specifics. I was curious if they were the same bodies that were coming back to change what we had approved and a clarification that I had gotten was this was a different group.
So you didn't raise any particular issues that impacted your decision on the project? It wasn't about the merits of the project before you, was it? It was just clarifying.
Yeah, just information for the prior approval for the specific site. I guess what happened is they, we had approved a building there. They never built it.
Right.
So a different group came back and with a different plan, and I just needed, I just was looking for clarification.
Okay. Do you recall, because this is one of the complaints in the letter, the minutes do not reflect what the clarification was. Was it clarified for you that there was a prior matter? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe we'll, we'll add that in. And then, did you clarify with Mr. Conlon or in some other manner? Was it with the board?
Just in general, I think I opened it, I think.
It was.
I think there's a group.
It was kind of clarified to me, and then we asked if it was the same group representing them. That was what I recall.
The lawyer spoke about it as well.
Correct. Lawyer had said it was a different, it was same ownership, but different group that had prepared the.
All right. Well, we could maybe clean that up a tiny bit, that element of the minutes, which for whatever reason was a concern for this individual. What I'm thinking is this, like normally I would perhaps say, there's not much for us to talk about and there's nothing to worry about, but back in the spring, it was discussed that we needed to maybe do a better job on the minutes, and that's something that I've been working with, with Madam Clerk, who's done an excellent job, as you know.
Yeah.
New to the game, but she's very quickly caught on to things. So regrettably, we are in a world today where this type of thing's going on a lot. If you knew, we're getting pounded here at City Hall, as are other municipal people and other municipal halls, with public records requests, with open meeting law violation allegations. I'm hopeful that it's just an interesting, good government, but it isn't always. Sometimes you can just tell who you're dealing with and that people are out to, you know, raise a little bit of turbulence, which is really regrettable, and it takes time. It takes our time. We've got a public waiting to deal with zoning matters now, but rather than get in and battle this and get into detail that you've done nothing wrong here, I'm going to take in good faith that this person thinks the minutes weren't clear enough and perhaps didn't explain enough on these two things. So we will add two words to item 12 and maybe a phrase to item 13, and we'll publish amended minutes. And as you said, we'll have them available at the next meeting.
Okay.
And you can make them part of the record. And I think that's a great way to just move along. And what I will do, if it's agreeable, and I'd ask for a motion from someone on this, if you would designate me to respond to the complainant, and the little note that I send to the complainant goes to the attorney general as well.
Brian, make a motion, please.
Yeah, make a motion for the city solicitor to respond to the complaint, to both the complainant and the attorney general.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, both are moved.
All right, well, thank you for your time. This is something we'll clear right up, and I appreciate it. I didn't mean to cause you any concern because, yeah, good, very good. All right. Thank you very much, and I'll work with Madam Clerk. We'll take care of this.
And in the Madam Clerk's, sometimes that thing might glitch a quick second when someone says something loud or not loud enough and it don't pick it up. So that's probably where it is. It just never got picked up or never got picked up on the TV minutes.
Yeah, we're definitely moving in a good direction here with all this.
We are, we are. Everything's going well now.
Thank you.
There's no malice at all involved anywhere, I believe.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Tina.
Thank you for taking me out of order.
Good night.
Appreciate it.
All right, on ZBA, I'm going to go to.
Do you want to start here?
No.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Make a motion.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes for the regularly scheduled meeting of October 22nd, 2024.
Second. On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause, so moved. I'm going to take something out of water because someone has to go upstairs to the council and meet with them. So I'm going to take ZBA 2467, Wad 6, James Callahan for finding special permit flood plan to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new flood compliant single-family dwelling on the premise number 179 Huckins Ave. The applicant representative here. Mr. LaRoche, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian LaRoche, 67 Mirzav in Quincy, here to represent the applicant, James Callahan, Callanan. This 179 Huckins Ave has been before you. There was case number Z19-43 that was concluded in August 13th, 2019, and that was a developer that was coming in to demolish an existing single-family home and build a new single-family home on this site. At the conclusion of the zoning process, there was negotiations that went between the Director Butter, my client, James Callanan, to purchase the property. So he did purchase the property in 2020, and then COVID hit, so things have been on hold for a little while, and now we're before you with a new proposed design. So this proposal that we have before you is, no new conformities are going to be created with this design, similar to what you approved before, and it is a fully flood compliant dwelling. We're in an AE14 zone, and we will be fully flood compliant. So we'll be requesting a special permit for the floodplain overlay district, and then as part of this presentation, we're going to be asking for a finding for reconstruction of a non-conforming structure. So the property, you can see I have a locust plan shown. It's at the end of Huckins on the east side of Squanum. It's on Quincy Bay, and it sits between two streets, Huckins Ave and Sunrise Road. It's at the very end of this Sunrise, fronts on the water. And you can see here in the aerial photograph, just to give you a context, it's a fairly large site at the end of the road here that we're presenting this project to you. The house that exists there now is seen in this aerial photo. It's set towards Huckins Ave to the west and north of the site, and we're proposing a very similar placement of the dwelling. Now, here's just an existing conditions plan. You can see we're, through the property is a VE zone, which is a wave velocity zone. So we're staying out of that zone, but we are in an AE, which is the flood zone. We also have an easement that runs through the property for a city sewer line that runs between Sunrise and Huckins Ave. So you'll see the plan in just a moment. We're respecting that as well. So the proposed dwelling, if I toggle between the two, you can see we're very much in the same corner of the lot, and in a moment, I'm going to show you another diagram that overlays both the existing and proposed, so you can see how we're placing the dwelling. One of the things that was really important to my client, who lives on the lot just on the left side of the screen, was the view. And, you know, and Mr. Chairman, you said to him in that presentation, if you're not happy with it, you might as well buy it.
I'll buy it.
So he took your words and went ahead and did that. So, you know, client who lives in the neighborhood, he's, you know, wants to make sure that all the neighbors are happy. So it was really important to him that we designed a dwelling that stayed pretty much in the same placement as what was there, and that's what we have before you. So let me just show you a little bit. The green that I've outlined is the existing dwelling. You can see I've just marked some of the corners. The proposed ZBA design that was presented to you back in 2019 is the orange corners. So you can see in our design, which I've sort of outlined in red, you know, we are pushing the design back, and that was important for my client to make sure that he was being respectful to his neighbors on Sunrise, to preserve that view coming through the corner of the lot. So that's what we did here in the design. So we're, we're up against that, plus the VE and plus the easement, so there's a lot going on here. But we are holding the top right corner is basically the same as what it is now, and then at the back of the, or, you know, the left edge of the property that abuts his property, we're holding 13 feet, which is the requirement for a side yard setback. The design is such that you can drive through from Huckins to Sunrise. We have a two-car garage that's pulled through, but also allows for the driveway, so if you had to pull through, if somebody was in the garage, you could. So we're keeping our disturbance high on the site and away from the water. I would want to point out, the dashed lines of the contour on that plan is a fill on the site, so we are making some modifications to the shape of the lot, and that's just so that we can get the grade to match up between the two streets and have that be flow-through. So in the city engineer's comments, you'll see, said substantial fill. I take exception to that. I mean, it's fairly minor what we're doing here for adjusting grades. So the house design is three-bedroom, we have two and a half baths, and it has a third floor, we're, so it's two and a half stories. We do have a roof deck to take advantage of the views and a small, you know, family room at the top as well. So in all, about 3,500 square feet in total of area between the three floors. There is no basement because of the flood zone. It's just a crawl space. This is the Huckins Ave elevation of the house. We're trying to keep and respect the scale of the neighborhood so that we're complementary to the other homes in the area. And then the water side of the house has a little bit more glass with a wraparound porch on it, and then to the right on the first floor is a three seasons enclosed screen porch, and then the Sunrise elevation with the garage on the left and then the wraparound porch on it. Again, the height from the average grade plane to the highest point is 35 feet, so we're conforming with the zoning requirements there. And then the elevation that, to the adjoining property, is this elevation here. So you can see the cut through of the dwelling, you can see we have the crawl space. The bottom of the crawl space is rated design flood elevation. All we're using that space for is to pass through some ductwork and piping. There's really nothing else that's happening there. It's a four-foot space. And then, as I mentioned in the opening remarks, it is a fully flood compliant dwelling with flow-through flood vents, allowing the water to come in and equalize on the foundation, and that's shown in the details here in this wall section that are included in your packet. So as I mentioned, we did receive the city engineer's comments, and one of the comments, the number one, the question was, how much impervious area will be increased due to this development? It's essentially the same, 13 square foot difference between the two, and it, there's a little bit of variation between driveway footprint versus the building footprint. The existing condition has a larger driveway area, but they proposed has a bigger footprint, but they trade off for each other. So it's essentially the same. And then the city engineer asked about existing site conditions plans. It was included in the packet, but we have this drawing that shows the existing conditions. We'll make sure that all the utilities are shown on that plan, too. And then provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and the driveway entrances. So the drawing right now, or at design level, when we go for full building permit, we'll have construction grade drawings, which will have all that information on it. So for building permit, we will definitely have all of that information included in our packet. And then, fourth comment, as I mentioned before, the significant fill comment, and there will be no impact to the adjoining properties. All the grades that are being adjusted are within the site. There's no change in grade to any, you know, we have Sunrise on the bottom in the, my client's property to the, to the left, but we're not making any, any changes. It's literally just for us to be able to have a nice graded driveway to be able to pass through. Well, at that, I will turn it over to, to you if you have any questions for me.
I don't. I went over these plans a few times, and little mouse told me that someone bought it that didn't like his view. Sorry, I only took a good look at it. I think you did a good job, I really do.
Thank you.
The drive-through, you know, the pavement, I'm not a big fan of, but I understand it's not really a ton of it there. There's a lot of open space there, so it's been draining, so that was my only worry at the time. I think you did a really good job designing this house.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Mr. Ray Dell?
Just because I know there's a property very close by that is used for, or was used for Airbnb. I'm assuming this is going to be the primary residence now?
That is correct.
Right.
Yes.
Just making everybody's fears at ease there.
Yes. Good question.
Tim, no questions?
It's not at this time.
Mr. Frank?
I have no questions.
Good, thank you.
Hey, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here that want to speak in favor? In favor? First call?
Good evening. My name is Chris Carroll, attorney in Quincy, and I'm also the attorney for the Calender in Cleveland. As you know, we spent the summer of 2019 with this orbit with the other project, and we followed the Aitken's rule. If you want to view, get a view, so we did. Two weeks later, we checked out the project. The Calenders love the neighborhood. They're moving forward in the new home. They'll go forward, live there for their lifetime. They love it, looking out the Boston light, and there's no speculative motives, and then when they're down, their other house will go on the market. Brian, Brian, because he moved that just to do the right thing when it comes to seashell properties, and he has, but it is strictly the Calenders, we would have been here sooner, but we wanted to prepare the best for the site and what was best for the neighborhood. So here we are, and we hope to get this done and get voted. So thanks for your time, as always.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jane McKenzie, I live at 18 Sunrise.
Could you please go up there so we could keep her? Well, she's right in front of my mic. I need it on tape.
I don't know much to say.
I don't want somebody saying stuff and we didn't write it down. Oh, my God.
Jane McKenzie, I live at 18 Sunrise, the top of the hill. I'm the one that has this much water, people. I don't have any issue with this. This doesn't have, the current home really doesn't have any, like, 1880s charm to it that you would want to preserve. I'm glad Jimmy and Margaret, they posted it in their name, as opposed to, you see so many of these now being posted in the lawyer's name or the architect's name. They were straight out, they put it in their name. The only thing I do want everyone to remember is that Lot 12 and Lot 11 across the way in, on Sunrise, per, I believe it's Land Court, it says that there is a strip of beach that is reserved for the residents of Sunrise Road, so that if the concrete ramp becomes longer or all of that, that we, we can just go and sit on it, too, because it's on the strip of beach per Land Court, and it's in everybody's mortgage. It's in their mortgage, mortgage across the street, that the strip of beach is reserved for Sunrise Road residents, so. But other than that, I have no objections to this project.
I'm good, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else? Counselor?
Hello. Hello, everybody. Noel Debona, 70 Chickatobbit Road. I'm in support of this project, a single family for a single family. I've known Jim for quite a while. I've been on this property back in 2020. Obviously, COVID had happened, and here they are tonight, so I'm in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Debona. Is there anyone else? Second call? Anyone else in favor? Third call? All party hearing closed. I have a letter here, has to be read into the record. Well, this is April, April, that's 10 points. That's a new one.
Mr. Chair, okay, we reviewed this in the middle for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions. Three, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Four, it looks like there will be significant fill in the area near Sunrise Road. Explain how the fill will affect abutting properties. Five, upon completion of the project as-built plan, showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. An elevation certificate should be submitted if the property is in the flood zone, which it is.
Thank you. All party hearing closed. If anyone opposed, we're undecided. First call? Second call? Fair call, closed.
I'm surprised we didn't get it from the Director Butter on that.
I know. I know. I said, I don't know if I'm a favor, I'm not a chance. I'm going to be voting for him.
I think it's a nice project. Appreciate your patience and time and diligence. Thank you.
It's a well-done project, I'm afraid.
It'd be great. It's going to be a beautiful house, and we all appreciate the consideration of the neighbors. No one shows up objecting, that's always a good thing for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree.
On the motion, please.
Mr. Chair, in case ZBA, sorry, 24-67 James Callanan for finding and special permit, FPOD, to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new flood compliant single-family dwelling on the premise numbered 179 Huckins Avenue. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the finding, special permit, and flood plan.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause, so moved. We're grabbing stuff. Thank you. Good luck, guys. Did, Brian, who was here on 125?
It was, I believe it was the council.
You were here.
Yeah, oh.
John was here.
I was here. You weren't here.
Which one? Which one? Dorchester?
Dorchester. You were here. All right. Mr. Chin, if you could sit out this one, I'm sitting in.
Yeah, because you'll have to sit in, because John wasn't here. Or John was here. John was here and is not here.
I watched the whole video. So further on in tonight's business.
Is everybody who just voted on it, please?
We got you.
That would be great.
Yep.
There's two sheets in there, guys.
Yep.
ZBA 2458, Joe McLaughlin and John Lehman for variant special permit, to increase a current single-family home by one and a half stories, add, remove, and renovate the front and back porches, add a rear addition, and make the structure flood compliant on the premise number 145 Dorchester Street. The applicant representative here. You are up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here this evening. This is Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. I'm here with John Lehman and his wife Joan, who are the applicants. At the last hearing we had, there was significant testimony from us and from upper moderates of neighbors and in defense of Mr. Lehman's character and his quality as a builder, and I think the majority of people were very positive in their comments. The board requested at the last meeting that the addition that was going to be placed, which was a two-story porch in the front on Dorchester Street, be staked out and the members could have a chance to go by and take a look at it. So I know that John has done that. I believe that some of the members have gone by the property to look at the stakes, and we would like to stay with our design and welcome your comments, questions.
I tell you, I went down, I looked at it. Are they all in line like they said? No, they aren't. Some are out, some, six feet, some back three feet. I think you had a great design there last time. I watched it on TV when it happened, and I'm sitting here tonight, and I'll be voting for it the way you draw it. I think it's a good project, it's a nice build-up. I don't think you could ask the neighbor any more than that.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I went and took another look, both up and down.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know, I went and took another look, both up and down. And there's, there's, there's not any continuity on the street whatsoever. I mean, there's kind of continuity on that side, but it's, it's, it, once you get to the next block, it's, it's completely out of whack. So I, I was in favor before, I'll be in favor.
I agree with sentiments that it's, it works well with the block and the neighborhood. I'm in favor.
I, I went and looked as well, up and down, several times. Every house is different. There's a little bit of a jog off of the straight line on one. One is fully paved or fully paved. One of them has giant wooden Seattle, Washington. Everything is different there. If anything's consistent, it's that they're all unique and not consistent. So I think it'll be just perfect. I'm in favor.
Yeah, I feel the same way. If you're not coming to the sidewalk, I don't have an issue with it. Whatever you have, you have.
Thank you. Kind of motion, please.
Mr. Chair, ZBA 24-58, Joe McLaughlin and John Lehman for variance, special permit, flood plan, to increase the single-family home by one and a half stories, add, renovate front back porches, add a rear addition, and make the structure flood-compliant on the premise numbered 145 Dorchester Street. Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance and special permit. Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Pulsed. Some move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chin's in. Mr. Franklin, you want to step up close? All right. You gotta sign this first.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
What, what's the?
What's up?
My name is Mark Nugent. I'm here, I live at 151 Dorchester Street.
You have to speak the last case.
Time out. I get what you're, you're trying to tell me, you have a right to speak now. No, you did the last meeting, it's all in, all in the minutes. So this was the board's decision to put off the decision. Let me finish here.
Okay.
Till the board votes. You want to say something? Make, make your peace.
Okay. You not make the decision yet.
We already have.
Okay, all right.
All done.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm here to listen to your decision, but you already did. So it's, John, he got the assistant population, same with everyone out on the block, on this block. So he got a, I see he draw the line, he, he goes six feet from the assistant population, he goes six feet, and he mark on the, on the, on the ground. And for everybody to see, I'm sure, I, you did like, you say you already saw all that. It to me, when I see the line, no problem. I see the line, it's okay. But if he got a foot, the build, the house, forty feet, forty-two feet wide, forty feet deep, thirty-four feet high, more or less, then it, when he got a foot, the five-foot stair landing by twelve, three fair foot stair, toward to Dorchester Street, and to me, wholly, wholly, it's look different.
Sorry, you have the right.
Excuse me, let me finish, please. Okay?
It's hard to decide.
I know, I know, just let me.
Yeah.
Give me a minute.
It's different. To me, it is different. So I believe we work hard. We choose to live on resonance, resonance so zone A.
It's a single-family home.
Excuse me?
Hey, wrap it up, wrap it up. You're not gonna spend all day either.
Yeah, yeah.
I got a meeting.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You're gonna be speaking, I'm letting you, wrap it up.
Yeah.
Wrap up what you're, what you're excited about or what.
Okay. If you don't like me to finish, that's okay.
That, that I'm not gonna listen to, we're all hard-working. That's not the issue.
Yeah, they're not issue.
It's the issue speaking.
But I just want to see.
Tell me your issue.
It is, because it's so.
Big.
Not so big.
Oh.
If it, it's so far.
Up.
You're far to, forward to the street.
Yeah.
And block everything else.
No, it's not.
Block, block everything else.
Now, we decided it wasn't. You have a right now to go sit, go sit, and if you want to appeal it, go to the state.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay.
A general right.
All right.
Done here, sir.
All right, that's fine, that's fine. And I, I, how long I gotta get the appeal? Where I gotta go appeal?
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
Where I gotta appeal?
DPDW and talk to them, and they'll let you know all the rules.
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matt, Chairman.
Thank you.
Lady and Chairman.
Are you calling Willow, or?
What?
Are you calling Willow?
Yes, I'm next. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we're gonna go and say, and appeal, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
ZBA 2459, JBC, JCBT Architect LLC for variance, finding, permit, flip, demolish the garage and construct a three-story rear addition with a garage on the premise number 130 Wall Street.
Usually me being the nice one.
Huh?
Usually me being the nice one, and you tell me.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Just only, they did it for half an hour the last time.
I know, it's just, you just can't. Five minutes, I gave him quick time to speak.
We'd already voted.
Do you have the floor, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Chen, architect of JCBT Architect, address located 606 Washington, Quincy. So during our last ZBA hearing presentation back in October, early October, the board members were concerned about the, the overall size of the addition. So after a discussion with the homeowner, well, they're willing to cut back ten feet of, off of the original proposed addition on all three floors. This will, will be resulting in a reduction of 221 square feet per floor, with a total area of 663 square feet reduced. So currently, the lower level has 619 square, square feet consisting of two-car garage, and the existing basement will be infill to a crossface due to the, the compliance needed for the floodplain regulation. So the first floor will have a living area of 1,456 square feet. The front portion of the existing home will be remodeled for a, for the living room, dining room, and kitchen. So the rear addition portion with 675 square feet of attic space will have a family room and a home office space. The second floor addition consisting of four bedrooms and two bathrooms with an area of 1355 square feet. The area, the area of the house will, will be a total of 3,400 square feet, including the 619 square feet of garage. So the actual living space will be on 21, 2,800 square feet. The 10-feet exterior, exterior rear deck was added on the first floor with second axis off of the, second means of egress, axis off of the deck. This will bring the FAR to 0.65, which is excessive of 0.40. So the garage will have a, the proposed garage will have a setback of two feet back from the existing face of the building, which allows a, a wider radius turning. We currently have 22 feet wide in front of the garage door with a 14-feet driveway width. This leave, we're leaving a six-feet landscape buffer between the abutting property. We're in compliance with the height and a number of stories. We're requesting for finding for the front yard and the, and the right side yard setback. The rear yard and the left side, and the left side is, are in compliance. Will also require special permit approval from the floodplain overlay district, from the conservation commission in the future. Thank you, and I'm open up for any questions.
What's the total length of that, that one there? I got both plans here. One's like 60-something feet, 70-something feet.
From the front, about 63.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's inside, come on. You got 5,200 square feet of house, of, of room there. You got no driveway, you got two parking spaces, and, and you got a giant addition. Just so you know, I'm not even close to doing what you asked the board to do. Cut it back, cut it back, though. You can say what you want to the board, I don't know how the board feels, but that is one still huge project without law. Anyone, any comments, anything? I mean.
What's on the third floor, Jim?
There's no, no third floor. It's just a roof.
It's just the extension.
Added.
That's what I'm trying to look at, I'm like.
But it's, it's, it's.
So 14, yeah, how do you go from?
If, if it goes back, I can go 38 feet from that.
Yeah, so what's, why, why are they?
It's like six, you know what I mean? Let's, let's.
Two seconds.
Let's try to get something real, addition, you know?
Like the existing is 26.
But you're taking that all the way down, all the way down.
Where's the extra?
I think four feet, no, you said four feet.
Yeah, where, where's, where is the, oh, so you raised the whole house? Additional four feet?
That's about three feet high.
On the back.
In the back, right.
Oh, that's the back, that's, so this is the front. So front, my front elevation, front elevation will stay relatively around 26?
About same, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. I was, I was like, where did we get this additional eight feet? Okay.
And then it goes back.
No, that's why, I was just confused.
What are the access to the garage?
Yeah, so you're gonna get down, because it does pitch down.
And that's a small one. And the pop, where are you gonna put all those people?
So it's four beds, what's it say, three beds?
Four beds.
It's four beds today?
Uh, it's three beds today.
Three beds today, yeah. It's probably additional then.
Yeah, that's the way it's played.
No, I get it, I get it, I, still.
It's just me, I'm one vote. I don't know what you guys think. Am I gonna spend the whole night and then just do it? I just go up front the way I feel, I'm gonna help.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Spend all night, and if he's got four votes, God bless him, do it, build it. I know, and I see projects that really are, that's when you cut back, I'm still gigantic. Five, six, come on, we can do better than that. I don't think his neighbors are gonna like that.
I have no prior questions. Do you have any questions, or?
So it's a 5,250-square-foot lot. That's great. Building is 60 feet long, roughly, right?
That's great.
63 long. It's kind of long, a long building for that size.
Yeah, this is, the front eight feet is the, the enclosed sort of a porch area.
Okay. I have nothing, no other questions.
On the last meeting, we asked you to come up with a plan, so the garage, so parking in the driveway wouldn't block the garage, and I don't see that that's been done.
Well, you actually stepped back the, the addition two feet further, so we.
So we're.
So you can turn easy.
Agreed, but where, where are, you only, you're only providing two-car parking, so you haven't added any more onsite parking. So I'll be opposed to the plan as presented.
Still Brian?
Yeah, I, other than making it just a shade smaller, I don't see, it just appears to be really big. I don't, you know, I mean, it's, the way it's presented, it's kind of the way I've known it.
And it could have been designed a little differently. The front could, they could have made that like fit right in. I know they want a little architecture in front to get that. But a huge addition in the back of that place is just too much for the neighbors.
Look like a giant box. It'll look like a giant box.
So you gotta have something to it, but does it need to be that big for additions? It's a two-family house.
Is that a first, full bathroom on the first floor as well? Is that a shower or tub in that bathroom?
That's, that's a full bathroom.
That's what this is about.
So in essence, this speaks to me more of a five-bedroom house, because a home office next to an adjacent full bathroom can very easily turn into a proper bedroom. So this speaks to me as a five-bedroom house with two living rooms.
So before we go any further, do you want to try to redo it again and get another date, or you don't?
Yeah, I would like to go back to the, to the client and try to reduce it even more.
January 14th, January 14th. We are straight out till January. I know. Single motion for January 14th.
ZBA 2459, JCBT Architect LLC for variance, finding and a special permit to demolish the existing garage, construct three-story rear addition with a garage on the premise numbered 130 Wall Street. Quincy, I make a motion to move to January 14th.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pulsed. Some move.
Is there opportunity for public comment?
Yeah, matter of fact, you want to speak, come on up. We just moved the date because it's, it's just not gonna work the way it is. But if you want to come up and speak, sure, come on. We're gonna have another date, January 4th, on the new design, so that's.
There'll be new plans, yeah.
So make it quick.
Sure. My name is Taylor Campbell, I live across the street at 133 Wall Street. I don't have an opinion about the size of the building. If it were multifamily, if it made no new additional off-street parking, I would support that. With the, the size of the lot, doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you the 14th. You'll have a new, new plan to look at. You can get that probably two weeks before the meeting at the clerk's office. All right, where are we here? 24?
74.
74, there you go. ZBA 2474, Terry Patrick Foley for various Wall Street parking as it relates to the additional seats added to the establishment, 451 Hancock Street, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, business address 265 Willard Street. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight. I'm joined here by Jim Chen, who's the architect for the project. The property we're here to discuss tonight is 451-453 Hancock Street. It is in the Business B zoning district, and I think we all know it as Wheelhouse Diner. The wheelhouse, as we all know it, for years, traditional diner, great food, great service, an institution in the Wallaston North Quincy neighborhood, very iconic, people loved it. I know myself, as a kid, you'd go down Hancock Street on a Saturday or Sunday morning, you would see a line out the door, whether it was 10 degrees, 90 degrees, rain, snow, sleet, whatever it was, there was always people outside there looking to eat. The applicant bought this building about a year ago. And also, I, I don't know if people are fully aware of it, the restaurant is attached to the sign store right next to it. So what the applicant is seeking to do here tonight is to change the layout of the building. So when they bought it last year, it was really important to them to keep the diner there. The city's changing, there's a lot of new, great stuff coming here every day, but it's also very important to keep our old, traditional, institutional, small businesses not only surviving but thriving here in the city. So what the applicant is seeking to do by change of the layout is, I'm sure you're all Um, so what the applicant is seeking to do here tonight, um, is to change the layout of the building, um, so when they bought it last year, it was really important to them, um, to keep the diner there. The city's changing, there's a lot of new, great stuff coming here every day, uh, but it's also very important to keep our old, traditional, institutional, small businesses, not only surviving but thriving, um, here in the city. Um, so what the applicant is seeking to do by change of the layout is, I'm sure you're all familiar with how the existing layout is there today, um, you walk into the uh, the diner, the uh, the counter's right there with the, with the stools. And you have the grill, um, right in the back with a couple booths, um, behind it, the existing uh, counter, that's staying, all those seats at the counter are staying as well. Uh, but what the applicant is looking to do is the booths behind the counter, they're gonna, they're looking to move those, um, it's a great opportunity for them to get people in off the street, um, that wait outside, um, to eat, so that's gonna be kind of a waiting area. Um, they're gonna knock the wall down inside, utilize that spot over at the sign store, put some tables and chairs over there, um, have more space for their customers and create a more uh, more comfortable dining experience for everybody. And plus the additional speech, seats right now, um, running a restaurant, running a diner, it's a tough business, the profit margin's very thin, um, especially now with the cost of everything going up. So those additional seats, um, will help, will help them survive and i- hopefully do very well down here, um, and just have another small business, um, in the city. Uh, Jim, if you just wanna go through some of the uh, layout.
So the uh, front part of the wheelhouse diner is uh, it's about a thousand, would have, would have more over a thousand square feet, uh, in a combination of the uh, uh, the source base, I, so it's about, would have been over three thousand square feet. So, uh, majority of it will be uh, interior remodel, uh, that we're keeping the same style of uh breakfast area, uh, having some open seating in the front. The back area, kitchen will be uh modeled, and we'll have a connection from the uh, whole um, restaurant into the newer part. Connection will happen here, but it's faulty opening through, um, there's a, a great difference, uh, of uh, fourteen inch from there to there, so we'll have a buckle step going down, then ramp going down there. Majority of the seating, uh, will be over in this section, about four seats. New, new accessible um, head cap bathrooms, um, the, the old one was just really tight, so we'll have a new one over here, and then uh, the commercial kitchen in the back there, sort of a, a ghost kitchen for under uh, business. And then the delivery, what happened, um, on this side, uh, through this um, delivery area will some storage, common storage area, and then on, on to the bottom right corner there, we'll have a bakery area, that's sort of serve the um, part of this um, restaurant. And um, there'll, there'll be two, two uh, front door maintain on uh, Hayward Street, uh, toward there, but the main entrance to the restaurant will still be maintained at that end.
Okay, so we need to do, right, all three doors?
All three doors, yes.
And Mr. Chair, I think the owner's representatives here would like to say a few words still.
Hey, everybody, Helen Shiner, I'm here as the owner's representative, just to simplify, for those of you that have been into the diner before, so right at the uh, front where the glass windows are, there's booths there, booths have been there for a million years, then you have the, all the stools that are around the counter. So essentially, that front area by the glass window, there's gonna be some bench seating, if you're waiting for a seat, if you're waiting for takeout, it's too crowded in there. Um, it's, you know, if I could tell you about the conditions inside, it's, it's atrocious. Um, so what we're looking to do is keep the traditional diner, it's actually gonna be called the diner, very simple, um, and we're gonna, we're looking to move what was the booth seating to the back, into where the sign place is now. But still keep the same feel, so we're gonna have that counter space, so people like to see the cook at the griddle, um, you're gonna be able to see that from both sides. So as we kind of push everything back a little bit, we're gonna bring outside of the griddle, you know, the kind of fry cook and stuff that's right in front of you, any of the prep work, any of that stuff, that's gonna be pushed to the back. So what we're doing is replacing the booth seating that was right up front with table seating on the other side. Um, Jim and both, and Pat also mentioned kind of a bakery area in the back, so we are gonna do our own in-house baking, so pastries, breads, all those kind of things, that's gonna be there. Um, so it's really just to push back, so the main reason we're here tonight is, um, we're asking for some relief on the parking, so we're looking to add eight additional seats. Um, the, the restaurant has been accommodating, I think it's forty two um, seats. Mr. Conlon advised me that, although I couldn't find anything, Mr. Conlon told me that uh, what he can see in the records is it's thirty two seats, but it's been operating as forty two for the last thirty plus years. So we're asking for an increase of eight seats. It's, you know, the, the whole goal is to maintain the diner in this section of the city, um, but there's heavy foot traffic there, as you may know, there's the Vane Street parking lot, there's also some additional lots in the back that can be utilized with people.
A lot behind.
So you have, um, you have the wheelhouse diner, then you have the sign shop, Randy Haritz, then you have the roadway that passes through, which is the right of way, C mark behind that. Then if you go over to the other side, you have Granite Lofts and um, South Cove, then you have the big parking lot that serves what used to be, um, well, it's now the Christopher Arrow um, Learning Center. So there's that big lot there, um, in the backside of that.
Are you?
So if you're on Hayward Street.
Are you building any parking onsite for you?
No, we have, no, we need to keep these, there's no room for additional parking.
There's no room to buy any next door or?
Not, well, no, no, it's an existing two family immediately to our left.
I know, but restaurants completely different.
Our intention, our intention was to try and purchase additional property, but for those of you that frequent social media or the Patriot Ledger, you may have seen some of the trials and tribulations of the last year. Um, so we were unable to obtain the property next door, um, they all of a sudden thought that the price that we were offering them was substantially uh, below market based on kind of misleading information that was put out there.
So the sign business is gonna be up?
Sign business has been closed since Randy died a couple of years ago, yeah, there will be no sign business, no.
Uh, where's the nearest parking on the main drag?
So, so Vane Street, so, but you have that cut through right beside um, Murphy Tool and Dive, so there's a walkway that takes you right to the back of the Vane Street parking lot.
Stairs probably.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I don't know where it's.
Uh, it's about three, it's about three buildings deep if you cut through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of people are here to like that. Go to Assembly, people are here to like Vane Street. Just never filled, I've never had trouble getting parking. Really, really haven't.
We're parked on the short end of buildings, that's what I do, back in the old Murphys and Walshes and Kelly's days.
I'm always astonished that they on-street parking available.
They find.
Like, it's just, you know, like, Hayward, Hayward Street, like.
They define it and don't go.
When C mark was opening, you know, the loss had just been put in, Hayward Street, there was a lot of parking on Hayward Street, which created a problem because of trucks delivering. They, they, I believe they have hours for delivery that are off hours of probably this, there's no parking on Hayward Street, I believe now.
There's no parking.
So like, it's not like you're gonna inundate neighbors at Granite Lofts with additional parking that they weren't using already.
What do you, what are your hours gonna be, what days?
Uh, well, it's all still in the works, but, so we're not gonna open as early as it previously did, we're looking at a six AM start, um, initially, we're gonna be open six to three. We, when we apply to the city for our um, business certificate, we're, we're gonna ask for extended time, because if we increase to dinner hours later in the year, but primarily, I can guarantee you, cause I'm gonna perform, it's gonna be there, for the next year, it's gonna be six to three. Um, but we will anticipate in the future, based on success, remaining open for dinner, I don't.
Then you go and you'll ask for, for more hours.
No, I, I can tell you we won't.
In a year from now, you're not going to?
No, we're, I mean, the longest we'll go is through a dinner hour, not, there'll be no late evening stuff.
I didn't say it, what's dinner hour, six?
Yeah, five, six, seven, yeah, uh, so I would anticipate.
That's the problem, but.
Six to seven.
You're telling me now, six in the morning, so three in the afternoon are gonna be your hours, and then you will go back and ask for longer hours.
No, so what?
You gonna do with your application?
To add the application, I'll ask for six to seven, but our primary hours will be six to three.
Yeah, I'd have to go look at that whole area again, I thought you were adding parking, just, I, I got a problem with it, I, if you're gonna be there at seven at night, there's, there's, there's other people that already been there, they have their, their people and you just, I mean, it's another Panera Bread you're putting in there, but it's down the street, so.
No, I mean, it's.
Just to me, it's just me.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's nothing like a Panera Bread, so.
Has their own parking, you don't, that's the difference, so, just so you know.
I, I appreciate it.
This tonight, I would ask the board, let's go get a, let's, let's take a good look around that community and see what we got for parking, and make sure it's right, or they can borrow on it tonight if they want, that's just my two cents of this, I think. I didn't look at the parking, I thought you guys had part of that lot that was in back, I thought that we did.
There is additional.
Company.
Right, so we have the parking spaces in front, and then uh, there are areas that are striped out in the right of way behind the building.
I, I thought you had real spots in that back, I thought that was a sign, parking in the back.
It's on the ri- right of way.
I'm just gonna, not to step on your toes or anything, there's plenty of restaurants where, I mean, like the China, for example, we expanded that and increased, and, you know, largely have not dealt with any parking issues since.
We don't know that, I know, I've been up there a couple times, I can't get in, so I take.
But you make a business decision to not shop at that business, exactly.
Go somewhere else.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, that's their business risk, not ours, on our end, I'm more worried about the gutters, and then, and if you look at from.
That's what I'm worried.
What, when you look at from a residential standpoint, or where people would park in inundate neighborhoods, is there's no where to do that there, like the street.
I'm not saying that, but you can't keep putting in restaurants and make a bigger restaurants when there's no place to park. We have to look at it, say at one point, we are full, we, we've done the max restaurants, get something else, get something else where people just go in and out, in and out, in and out, not sit there for.
Any business you have is gonna have a challenge there with the parking.
And respectfully, we're talking about eight seats.
Sitting down eating, there's a difference.
Alan, just uh, your application said twenty seats in addition, is it eight?
It's an additional eight seats.
Cause they just have to see with the city, the city had thirty two when we put the application, and we're going back and forth with Jim, and we had it forty two, they've had it for forty two for years, he told us to put thirty two in the application, um.
So you're, so it's really eighteen in addition?
Uh, uh, uh.
The eight seats.
It's eight seats.
Okay.
What, what will be the total seat count as proposed?
Fifty, yeah, now, Mr. Chair, if um, if it was straight six to three, would your opinion be different?
Course it would, it would, and then come back later, when you're there and you wanna go more seats, and you have a hearing and people talk about it, and the board will listen to you, maybe they'll go, no, there's no room for you to go next, I don't know, that's up to them then. Would it be up to me, how I would feel, I would feel comfortable with six to three, no one's coming home from work, they're probably already gone.
You don't have a conflict with the other restaurants that run, running lunch, stuff.
Right, exactly, and I feel more comfortable, like, back in there, there's plenty of room for all, and then if they want, in a year from now, come back to the board and ask the board, their license board, if they can stay open long.
So, Mr. Chair, if we're gonna change the hours in the year, we just go to licensing board?
Yeah.
For that, that wouldn't be as only.
If that's your comfort level, then, then we're willing to change it to six to three.
Yeah.
The board might say, I know everything down there, every street, where the fuck, yeah, you guys have plenty of room, right?
I'm happy to change it to six to three if that's the comfort level.
That's a nice level, that's all.
And then the year, if we wanna go set and go to licensing.
Whatever, yeah, you wanna do it in three months, after you get in, you're up and running, things going good, and you say, you know, I wanna move it, go to license board and ask them. But if I get your word, six to three, I'm in.
Six to three.
Alright.
Throw it back on.
Throw it back on. Throw it back on.
Just went on a big circle.
Well, that's alright, sometimes you gotta take that long ride to get there.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
I have no questions, I.
Any questions?
No, just, it was on that number of seats, so it's fifty seats total, it's just counted at that.
Yeah, I think your overall parking is gonna be a C mark, very close to, people coming and going all the time, it's a madhouse over there, I drop people off there almost every morning, and six o'clock to three o'clock is still a madhouse, so that's where we're gonna park.
Russell, the expectation too, like, when you talk to the owner, is this is meant for people that are waiting, we don't by any means think that increase the seats is gonna stop bringing all sorts of new people here to try the restaurant, it's just gonna be the people that are using it before they close down, and it's, you had a line down the street, around the corner some days, this is gonna be able to utilize those people, get them a seat, rather than having a line, get them off the street.
Get them off the sidewalk and out of the weather, that's true.
Get an English muffin or something quick before the.
The mention is gonna be quite similar to what it was at Willow.
Very similar, yes, there are marginal changes from it.
But I agree, if, if you keep it at the six, and then give the others a chance in the future to object if you.
More than happy to.
Longer hours, I think that would be fair to any butters, but at the number of seats that they're looking for, I think it's okay.
And no questions at this time?
Yeah, I'm good.
I went around the circle, I'm back, I'm back, you can have a seat.
Thanks.
So anyone here wanna speak in favor of the diner, you step up. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Taylor Campbell, I live at one thirty three Willow Street, I've been a regular at the Wheelhouse Diner for many years now, um, and I just, I wanna say, I wholeheartedly approve, uh, more restaurant capacity without more parking. Um, I, I live in the area, I walk there, I might, not cause it's closed now, but I, I, I used to walk to the Wheelhouse Diner or bicycle there, um, if there's any more parking, it should just be a small bike rack. Um, and I think that we're nowhere near being full, uh, with restaurants, I wish there were more places I could walk to, more small establishments I could walk to, or, uh, and, and fewer places for cars, uh, there, there's already a gigantic parking lot right next to it at the, at the ninety nine Ranch and, uh, and stuff, alongside. I, I am hungry, in fact. Anyway, that's all, uh, more, more, more establishments, less parking, thank you.
Appreciate you.
That's what they did in uh, Amherst, right? Don't wait in line, no parking. Anyone else, second, wanna speak in favor, second call, third call, all are partying and closed, a letter here from the D P W, we have reviewed the above, above reference project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed, have a motion, please.
Do you show this time?
I think, I think we got it through.
Z B A twenty four seventy four Attorney Patrick Foley for a variance for off street parking as it relates to additional seats being added to the establishment on the premise number four fifty one Hancock Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
It will be open six to three.
Six to. Six to three.
Second. On the motion, stand out all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, close, don't move. If you guys could just sign this and lay this, fine.
Yes. I like to figure I have the influence in here by uh, being so hard to track down. Kathleen, was that the reason for this change?
Yeah. Can't find them for months, can't find them for months.
What country are you in, what state are you in?
Can you do a dark sign?
And it moves the final decision to the clerk's office quicker for the decision.
Perfect, yeah.
Z B A twenty four sixteen, this thing for variance and finding to repair structural defects to the existing front porch and close it, will result in a three season unheated front porch while blending the new with the existing facade on the premise number one fifteen Willow Street, yeah, kind of representative.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Jim, I represent R B Group and Dennis Caldwell Architects, I'm also representing the client, which is my neighbor, the Keong's family.
What's your address, you didn't give me your.
Oh, my address is one nineteen Willow Street, right next door.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep. Um, just basically, um, they just wanted to use the front porch as an enclosed porch, um, just putting up some windows for their kids, I see them running around all the time in the winter too, so.
I like it closing, I think, too, that's part of our culture, is for the closing room coming in.
Yes.
One thing I wanna know is those, those facade, your facade that's there, is that asbestos?
We don't know yet.
I think it is, but.
Okay.
You gotta have a check.
Yep.
Before you do anything there.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that building might have asbestos shingles, when I looked at it, so, I don't know what they did in the back, I know they built a thing in the back already and built a deck, it was already, um, I don't think they touched the side, but maybe they did, I don't know, but someone's gonna look at that.
Yeah, I had um, Paul, the building inspector, he went by to took a look at that also already.
Yeah, but you gotta have it tested, I mean.
Yep.
Those, usually those kind of towns, I grew up, were asbestos.
Yeah, I have a property over in North Quincy that has asbestos tiles.
And it's a night, it's a nightmare, and I didn't get it, breaking into them, and, and you gotta bring bags and companies to come in, so, that's my only beef with that whole thing, I think it'll look good, but uh, I really have no questions about what you're doing there, the back looked nice, looking at that, it looks like that came on nice.
Property's well kept, well retained, you know, in honor of Mr. Covens, I will absolutely approve this. I will call him and tell him I did.
So Jim, are you adding any utilities up there?
No, um, the only thing that we'll probably be adding out there is probably the lights for the front porch or anything, but nothing else, the only encroachment I see is just the landing to get up to the, to the door, to the enclosed door.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you have to extend that landing out.
Exactly, yeah.
No questions?
Uh, I have one, it says here that you're uh, you're gonna look at the structural defects, do you know that there's structural defects there?
From what I, Paul and I walked through, it was pretty bad.
Pretty bad.
Really bad.
I mean, I saw a couple of.
Yeah, really bad.
Yeah, so yeah, it will be probably bad, once they, the guys rip it up, then we'll see more of the bottom, so. Paul's thinking that we might have to redo the whole thing.
Yeah.
And above you, there's a cracked tile too.
Yes.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor?
Thank you.
A neighbor.
It's a busy street for you tonight.
You put three things that are relevant to me on this agenda, so.
Not too much.
It's just a trifecta.
Yeah. So my name is Taylor Campbell, I live at 133 Willow Street, it's just a few doors down from 115. I actually have a question, if I may, if I may. My question is, why does this require a variance? What zoning rule does it break?
He's enclosed on his front porch, and he's encroaching on the front of the building, coming to the sidewalk.
So it's, yeah, it's proximity, it's the proximity to the front setback, because you have to come a few feet forward, and also in our zoning code, we have an enclosure, it requires a variance, so it's just written into our code.
People could just cover their porch, do it.
Make additional living space.
Take the inside wall out, make the house bigger.
Okay.
So we have to know what you're doing with your house, too.
Interesting, okay, so I reviewed the houses on Willow Street, of the 26 houses that have porches, 12 of them already have enclosed porches. I think it strikes me as absurd that it didn't even have to come forward with this.
That was kind of why it happened, so, you know, it was to make sure we put proper controls around it at the time, you know.
And we've said no to people, the structure of them was so beautiful, and they want to just enclose it, and it goes, oh my god, you just ruined your house. Your house is worth 50,000, 100,000 less than what it is if you enclose that porch. And you gotta see some of the woodwork on some of these porches, gorgeous. I mean, simply gorgeous, and they just want to, whoa, what are you doing?
Yeah, it was just, it was just.
Think of what you're doing before you do it, they didn't realize that kind of money was involved.
Classic government overreach.
Anyway.
It was, it was really, I don't admit that at all.
I'm just messing with you.
Yeah, I think the cost, the more persons getting screwed.
No, it was just.
We told them to cover their fortune.
If you came here 10 years ago, that we had 10 of these in the night.
Yeah, I know.
And it was, it was just becoming something that needed controls around it, that's why.
Okay, I mean, I think if someone has a beautiful woodwork, they want to destroy and they run property, it's their choice.
It's their own property.
And you gotta explain to them, do you realize what you're doing to your house?
Sure, sure, but.
Fee says, I said, we'll even give you a couple of weeks to go check it out, your house gonna do it a lot less if you enclose those two porches up there.
Anyway, I approve, and I think it's unfortunate that you have to go through a zoning appeal for zoning.
So Taylor, the city council can make changes to the zoning rules?
Right, yes.
I urge you to contact your counselor and talk about the absurdity of some of these rules, so that things don't have to end up in front of us, right? Then, then you saved me an hour to go play with my kids before bed.
That sounds great, I'll get out of your way now.
No, no, it's fine, man, I'm just messing around, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor?
Dan Mitten's number right now.
Anyone else? Second call, third call, all our party here enclosed, I got a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments, is there anyone here opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor?
I'm in favor as well.
Just put in the motion.
Yep.
Thanks, yeah, above checking.
The asbestos.
That's the shingles they might be in. Thoughts of the, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2416, Jen Zhang for a variance finding to repair any structural defects to the existing front porch, close it to result in a three-season unheated front porch while blending the new with the existing facade on the premise number 115 Willow Street, and verifying the presence or lack thereof of asbestos tiles. I make a motion to grant the variance finding.
Second.
On the motion, stand that all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Closed, don't move. There's two left, someone want to go?
Sure.
It's the chance to show.
It's like two fifty.
First one, first one, yeah.
The words were not in your mouth.
I know, he knows. When he stops talking, yes. You already hit the auto start on the clock. Alright. Give them a second.
350 Granite Street was supposed to be presented by Mr. Allen with the kids at the death of the family.
Yep.
And so the owner, I mean, will be represented himself.
ZBA 2418, Joe Ellington Jackson for variance to finish the basement with only insulation and drywall to make it usable but not habitable on the premise 350 Granite Street. Did you take notes?
Yes.
You sure?
Do you want it again?
I know, I was watching. Alright. You have the floor.
Name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jonathan Santiago, address 350 Granite Streets, Quincy, Mass.
What do you want to do there?
We just want to be able to finish to have it be usable, we have our hooker for the laundry downstairs, and also for additional storage spaces.
What do you have for floor down there? Concrete?
Concrete.
What's in the walls, nothing, just studs?
Believe it, correct, currently, right now.
I have no questions. It does mean no beds, you get it?
Correct, yeah, so we'd have additional storage space, we have a storage space upstairs. Not habitable, no beds down there, office, laundry, storage for the wife's shoes.
I know that feeling. I have, I have no questions. Oh, she knows, I made her throw autobots last year.
Five? It's like nothing.
Five? No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, sir. No, I'm good.
No, no, that was another one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, no, it was up on the.
Little hill, it's not.
The hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Is there anyone want, you can have a seat, anyone want to speak in favor? Aye. Second call, third call, all our party here enclosed. DPW has reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed. I'll be voting in favor, just as long as it's not habitable, that's fine.
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor. Take one. We have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 24-18, Gerard Ellington Jackson for a variance to finish the premise, finish the basement with only insulation and drywall, make it usable, not habitable on the premise number 350 Granite Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. On the motion, stand that all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, closed, don't move.
Sorry for your grants lost.
All set, you're good. Now that, you'll get a copy of it.
Okay.
Then you gotta put it in your deed.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I did. Just give me some time, see. Attorney Patrick Foley for a very special term of appointment to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new flood-compliant single-family dwelling on the premise number 67 East Elm. Oh, I thought that was good.
Yeah, you want to stand there?
No, it says. I keep stealing.
It's shingles.
I'm sure there's one in here.
Go back.
God, Jesus Christ. Was yours, counsel?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Patrick Foley, business address 265 Willow Street. I'm the attorney for the project here tonight, I'm joined here with our designer, and also Eric Shoemaker, who's our civil engineer for the project. The property we're here to discuss tonight is 67 East Elm Street, which is currently a three-bedroom single-family home, which sits on a 4,200 square foot lot, and it's in the residential A zoning district of the city. East Elm is mostly all single-family homes with the occasional multi-mixed in there, and I know it butts the former college as well. What the applicant is seeking to do here tonight is they are seeking to demolish the existing single-family home and replace it with a brand-new single-family home, which will also be three bedrooms with two bathrooms. All the dimensional, all the dimensions will mostly be staying the same with the new home. The biggest difference is going to be in the back, right now in the rear, there is a 45.5-foot rear yard setback, with the applicant's gonna be doing, and the team's gonna get a little more detail about it. That's gonna be like a 15-foot bump out in the back, which will then be a 30-foot rear setback, which will still be complying with zoning as well. There'll be a garage level, as well as a first floor, then a second floor, the garage will hold one car, they're going to be getting rid of the two sheds in the back, as well as the driveway off to the side. I'm now gonna have Eric just go over a little more of the civil for the board.
Good evening, my name is Eric Shoemaker, I'm a professional engineer with Mackenzie Engineering Group. I'll start just talking about the existing conditions of the site. We're at 67 East Elm Avenue in Quincy, it's about 4,200 square feet or .1 acres. We're located in the Residence A zoning district, and the FEMA zone AE, so that FEMA zone has an elevation of 11. So this project is bringing the site into compliance by raising that first floor elevation above that AE's elevation. We're bordered by residential properties on all sides, and as mentioned, the site is currently comprised of an existing single-family dwelling with batuminous concrete driveway. There's two sheds in the property, a cement-concrete and brick walkway, and then the rest of the rear yard is landscaped. The topography ranges in elevation, but it generally slopes towards the rear property line, and the existing conditions information, the perimeter and the topography is a result of an on-the-ground survey by Mackenzie Engineering Group. I would just like to also note that in October of 2021, we worked with the town engineer, the city engineer, and we responded to about three engineering review comments, and we believe we adequately addressed those. So moving on to the site layout plan, it's sheet C1 in your set, you'll see the proposed building, as well as the zoning setbacks and the surface treatments that we propose. The project is going to consist of a 1,012-square-foot single-family home, that's the footprint, with a one-car garage. The garage slab elevation will be at 8.25, and that first floor elevation I mentioned earlier is going to be at 17 and a half. So we're raising that first floor above the FEMA AE zone. The existing single-family home, as well as the two sheds to the rear of the lot, will be removed. The batuminous concrete driveway and cement-concrete walkway will be removed and replaced with loam and seed. We're proposing a new curb cut, also off of East Elm Avenue, that's roughly, I believe it's 13 feet wide. And we plan on closing up that existing curb cut to the DPW and Town Engineer regulations. A nine-foot driveway is proposed for the new structure, this involves the new curb cut, as I mentioned. The front of the structure includes a four-foot-wide cement-concrete walkway and sidewalk to that wooden stairway that will lead up to the first floor in the living area of the home. And as you can see on the left of your plan, you'll see the land usage tables, that shows a comparison of the Residence A zoning district, as well as the existing and proposed dimensional criteria of the site. We are not further encroaching on any of the setbacks that the existing structure had. You can see the proposed dwelling will increase the side yard setback from 8.3 to 9 feet. The rear yard will decrease from 45 and a half to 30.6 feet. This still exceeds the rear yard setback of 20 feet in the zoning district. And one last thing I want to note here is the total impervious coverage of the site is going to decrease from roughly 1,500 square feet to 1,250 square feet, so we believe this is a betterment to the site, you know, the drainage, any stormwater directed at neighboring property lines, we expect to be reduced from the existing conditions based on this decrease in impervious coverage. And lastly, just sheet C2 in your set, just gonna talk about the proposed utility connections for this single-family home. We propose new underground electric telephone and cable utilities, a new sewer service, new water service, and a new gas. The existing grades of the site will be maintained where feasible. The only place we envision site grading work is a very small area that's adjacent to the proposed driveway for that new curb cut. We also provided some erosion control measures on that sheet C2, that includes a silt sock erosion control barrier at the limit of work, and catch basin inlet protection for those catch basins located at East Elm Street. So that's a quick rundown of the site layout from our perspective, and I can pass it off to the.
Real quick, where's the second parking spot then?
The parking spot?
Is there a second one, is that what you said? I thought, I mean, the requested condition said two, that's why I was.
Yeah, it's garage and the driveway.
So the driveway leading into the garage?
Yes.
Yeah, they got one, one in the back.
Hold on, I mean, you're gonna stick out on the curb.
Hi, good evening, my name is Ivan Hernandez, I'm the designer of the project, I can step over and explain to you the project here.
My reen.
Yeah, you gotta stay in the microphone, I can't hear you, we can't read the minutes, start again, please, thanks.
Sure, my name is Ivan Hernandez, Monaleve Baker Street, West Roxbury, I'm the designer of the project. As you can see here on the plans, on the left side, we have actually a foundation plan, but the middle plan here shows the parking level, garage level. Spots for two parking spaces underneath the house, again, this is raised above grade because of the flood, flood zone. Over to the right side is the first floor plan, it's basically an open floor plan, stairs coming up from the front, from the garage area. Pretty much open floor plan with a deck on the back of the house to the backyard, again, stairs down to the backyard, let me just.
Come on, counselor.
Do your job.
Here in this center, center of the sheet here, you have a bedroom level, which consists of three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a laundry area, pretty basic layout. Stairs from this first floor up to the lower level to the bedroom level. And then over to the right, you have a basic cable roof, fairly low-slope cable roof, which you'll see now in the elevations. Thank you. Up on the center top portion, you have the front elevation of the house, showing the entrance to the garage, and then steps up to the front door on the middle level there. Standard, basic elevation, as you can see here with the roof, you have a fairly low-slope roof. Dimension there in the center is less than seven feet in height. The next elevation down is the right side of the building. Stairs over to the front, basic straightforward elevation, cable roof on the top, and then the deck on the backside. And then the center elevation there is the rear of the house, again, door coming out from the open living area to the deck, and then stairs down to the backyard. And then up above, you have those double windows, which are the bedroom level, basic cable, and then the side of the elevation. Here we have a section of the house showing you the kind of a cut-through and how that all lays out as far as interior. That's pretty, pretty much the overall description of the project, the rest is just framing plans.
We're fine, two parking spaces under the house, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's right, yeah, you only have one car there in the picture, that's why I was confused.
Two in the garage, one in the driveway.
So there's two tandem in the garage.
Yes.
I have no questions.
I have none.
Uh, no, no, thank you.
No thank you, no questions.
It's very late.
Why speak today?
No, you're welcome.
Sounds like Covet back again.
Michael.
I'm good.
I'm good, you can have a seat, does anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, all our party here enclosed, I got a letter here from the DPW, it's gonna be written into the record.
We've reviewed this middle for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows, one, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, will there be any fill or change of grade due?
Two, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Three, upon completion of this project, as-built plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. An elevation should be submitted if the project is in a flood zone.
Thank you. Call and party hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, I think it's a nice project. It's an improvement. I appreciate the parking. I know Marty doesn't like garages up front, but this, that's the way this works, so.
I'll be in favor.
Nice project, nice house.
Thank you. Agreed.
A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 24-62, Attorney Patrick Foley for a variance and special permit flood plan for, to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new flood-compliant, single-family dwelling on the premise number 67 East Elm Avenue, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance and special permit.
Second. On the motion, stand that all in favor?
Aye.
All so moved. Motion adjourned?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn. Second.